All right, well, in the town council meeting for December thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, and I open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just take a moment, have a moment of silence, remember all our first responders, military personnel home and away, and give them your thoughts. Thank you. So we'll make the announcement that in accordance with the Mass General laws, we are taping the meeting, the town council, LCAT is taping the meeting. Is anybody else in here taping? Nope, all right, all the comments. You're up, Mr. Parkinson.
Am I the first to say taping?
You are.
You are.
Well, that table, yeah.
Yeah.
Please don't scratch it.
You can smell the finish.
Please don't scratch it.
It's probably wet.
You can smell the finish.
It's really nice.
Don't keep your papers down there too long, they'll be laminated on us.
No, but it's very nice, I gotta tell you, it's a long, long time coming. So first of all, I want to say good evening, and I want to congratulate all of the members of the town council, the first town council needs long metal, glad you prevailed in the elections, okay? That being said, I also, in my mind, look at the seven of you, or supposedly seven, and I look at public servants who should be here in the spirit of public service and not in the spirit of self-monetary gain to a certain point. You should be paid for your time, there's no doubt about it. So, I came here tonight to discuss and to ask questions about the decision for compensation for the town council members for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, as pointed out by Mrs. Hill, one of the members, in the meetings of the thirteenth. And I just have to ask why you voted to give yourselves compensation during this fiscal year. I don't understand it.
Well, may I?
Go ahead.
Well, to ask a question back at you, why wouldn't we give ourselves some form of compensation?
Well, on page five, it states that, and this is for the records, our whole new charter, this is page five, line three, "Compensation for town council members shall be set in the annual town budget." Not by a special meeting, not by someone saying that it's an emergency edict, not by a town councilman, excuse me, by the town attorney saying that this time it's okay. It says, "Compensation for town council members shall be set in the annual town budget," which doesn't come till next year. So I'm at a little bit of a loss to understand why the council decided to vote on something that clearly states that it shouldn't be voted on and should come from the town budget. It doesn't seem like it made sense to anybody that I've talked to, including myself.
Well, I think, if I may, obviously, the idea of the town council was something that we did not know would happen until April twelfth of last year, at which time the budgets were already set.
Right.
So therefore, you couldn't go ahead and set a budget for a town council that may or may not occur.
Understandable.
So, in that case, and I believe that's why Jim Donahue said because of that one, because of this one particular year, you can go outside of the charter rule to, you know, to set a budget, to set a salary. And actually, there were salaries set for other branches that aren't being used because they're no longer in existence, so it's sort of like, you know, it's just the opposite.
It doesn't say anywhere in here.
Just so you know, in addition to that, the, there's others, like the town meeting, there's like about eight thousand dollars a year or something like that to do the town meeting, so you don't have those either. But those are lined.
I understand that.
Those are budgets.
It doesn't say anywhere in here that anybody can change this. It doesn't say, it doesn't say that it's interpretive, could be interpreted by the town attorney or by anybody. It says it has to come, shall, doesn't mean if, maybe, it means shall, come from the annual town budget. I understand you should get compensation. This is how I'm looking at it, and the people that have signed the petition, that's what I've had so far, are looking at it, that it should be retroactive, done in next year's town budget, so that when you have the, when you have the public hearing for budgets, we can sit here and discuss it with you, which is why we changed the form of government, because we want to be able to be heard and have the people that run the town adhere to what the town homeroom charter says, which didn't happen. I think it's pretty clear. And one of you, one of the members abstained because that member obviously read the town charter, and it says it right there, doesn't give anybody the right to interpret it, nothing. There's no, nothing in your, "I've read this thing." There's nowhere where the town manager can change it, the town council can say that it's okay. He can't speak for me, he doesn't work for me, doesn't represent me, he works for you. You represent me, but he doesn't represent me. So, we are, I am asking, I have almost a hundred people so far who are going to ask you to revoke your decision and wait till next year and do it through the formal town budget as it's stated in our new charter. That's it. It's not against anybody, it may be an oversight, but it's wrong.
Well, obviously, if I may, it's too bad our town attorney isn't here because he may be able to shed more light on why he gave that suggestion. And also, if you watched, if you saw the meeting of, whatever it was, our last meeting or the before, we voted to take our salary in one lump sum in June. So basically, what's going to happen is, I mean, if you're saying, "Do this retroactively with the new town budget," I have no problem with that because, you know, the other, whatever stipend, and that was, those were your words, retroactive, so.
That would be fine, and that's fine with everybody, all the sixty-eight people I have so far, that's fine with them also.
So I guess what I'm saying is, so the way we decide to get paid, we're going to have to wait basically from June fifteenth to July fir-, yeah, from June fifteenth to July first. So I personally have no problem with that, so.
Just one more point.
Yep.
When you took out papers, okay, you should have realized that this is after the budgetary process, and everybody, all of you, especially the seven of you, should know what's in the town charter, the homeroom charter. You should read it, you don't have to know every word of it, but this should have gone bing as an alarm, that this isn't right. And one person did, and I'm glad they did, I'm just saying, just one member of your committee did.
Yeah, I'm just saying, one person abstained, but you don't know the reason why they abstained.
I read it, I read it, I have the minutes right here.
If I may, I didn't abstain, I opposed the measure.
Right.
Okay, that's two different things. And please don't try to represent my reasons.
I'm not, I just have it right here, that's all, what you said.
Merry Christmas. We had a new table. Did you like my gift?
Good job, Santa.
Thank you very much. I love candy canes.
Thank you, Santa.
I got something extra for you guys, just in case you have a little budget shortfall. Oh, you got a bunch of candy canes, too. So you never can tell, so. Hopefully, the elves gave you enough.
We're gonna share it.
Thank you, Santa.
Yeah, you're welcome. How you doing? I like your new table.
Thank you, we do too.
We do too.
Thank you for the, for the sugar, appreciate it. Well, you do the treasury too, right? Oh, you definitely do that.
As I say, don't forget the collector.
Is it awful to know the collector? Come behind the Oval Office.
Yeah, good point.
And get a nice picture or something. Not often. I heard you guys had a new form of government, you got a new town manager, perfect time to come down and say that.
I just gotta say one thing.
Got a new table, but I knew about the table.
Where the hell were you in March?
I won't disrupt your meeting too much longer.
Have to call the Shandiers. Was this a practice run? Was this a practice run for?
Yeah, well, you know, if you saw the commercial that gave you that new Mercedes convertible, so, I'm trying it out.
Santa looks like he's been on Slim Fast. Pete, we did not hire him.
I'm just trying to come here and have a discussion, that's all.
Let me finish, if I may.
Please.
So, so.
Thank you for the candy cane.
So I know you're referring to me, I did a post-measure, I didn't not vote on the measure.
Okay, just a pause.
So it's two different things, and I have a variety of reasons why I voted that way. But the other thing that I want to point out to you, as of this date, the only vote the council has taken is what they are setting their salaries at. They've taken no votes to appropriate any money.
They can't.
So no votes have been taken to appropriate any money at this point, so.
You can't anyway, it doesn't provide for it.
That's actually more of a legal discussion, but the point I'm making is, I'm not sure what you're asking us to rescind when no appropriation has been made.
The vote, the vote was illegal, the vote was completely out of context of the law, and I'm just gonna, these are the minutes of the thirteenth, and it says.
I disagree with it, that's the point I'm trying to make.
These are the minutes of the thirteenth, it says, "Councilman Madison stated the compensation for appointed boards and committees needs to be addressed in the annual budget process to be reevaluated." That's where it comes from. Just the fact that you voted on it, you are not allowed to vote on it, you're not allowed to vote on the amount of compensation. It says it right here, it's in the town budget. I'm not going to get in argument, you have your own points, I have mine, I'm just trying to make my point, and sixty-eight others, I'm going to come back with a hundred signatures, and you're going to have to revote it.
My point is, there's been no appropriation.
I know, you can't appropriate it anyway.
There's nothing in there that says they can't set the rate. There's nothing in the charter that says they cannot set the rate.
Compensation for the town council members shall be set in the annual town budget. You can't even make a vote on it until the town budget.
And the amount, the amount needs to be decided before it can be set in the budget.
You can't decide it on your own.
Well, who's going to decide it?
We're going to have a public hearing, and we're going to decide it with you, the people of the town, you have to listen to us. You can decide what you want, right or wrong, large or small, I have no problem with that, it's your responsibility. But in looking at what the council people are to the town, you're a public servant, it's definitely something that should be compensated properly, we believe that's excessive amount, okay? And if you want me to read the petition, I'll gladly read it for you, because you deserve to hear what it says.
If and when you submit it, we'll read it then.
But that's what the people have said about, is number one, that it's outside of the strict letter of the law, and it's too much money. Agwam started out at five hundred dollars, and I'm not going to get into the dollar amounts, I'm just me, the town is sixteen thousand other people, okay? And we, they have a right to sit here and discuss it with you seven members in the annual town budget meeting. So all I want to say, you do what you want with it, but I am not going to just sit here and walk away. I promise you that, I wanted, I sold this thing right here, my name, my thoughts, my reputation, I sold this to six or seven hundred people easily I wanted it here to. That's all we ask. That's it. No arguments, I like all you people, I respect you, I thank you, let's just do it right so we have, everybody has confidence in our system, it doesn't go, "Look, they already made a mistake." Because people, it's being talked about now. That's all. I'm not going to argue about it.
Thank you for coming in.
Okay, welcome. Thanks for hearing me, and enjoy your holidays.
No comments? Comments?
Not this time.
Thank you.
Other than, I appreciate the candy cane.
Yeah, definitely. Denise, your town manager report.
I must begin my report with a sincere thank you to all of you for my appointment as the town's town manager. It was a pleasure serving as the acting town manager and an honor to be given the responsibilities of continuing the town's growth toward a successful, healthy future. Together, I'm confident that these wins of residence and businesses will be well-served. Thank you very much. I attended Massachusetts Municipal Association meeting in Plymouth, Mass, as the featured presentation was on HR technology, and Joe would be interested in hearing. It included applicant tracking software, onboard programming, a lot of things that are specific to HR operations, and they also do legislative updates and insight into statewide issues. It was a pretty interesting and informative session. The Board of Recycling, from the Recycling Dividend Program, the program's related to the Green Communities Act and can be used for recycling-related equipment. I'll update the council on what it is that we decide to do with it after that's decided. The town's free cash was certified on November twenty-ninth, and I've attached a copy of the notice of the certification. I, Ryan Quimby, Sarah Menard, Amy Petrosky, Dan, Don Mackey, Michael Kane, and Don Anderson, and I think maybe some other council members.
I was there in the morning.
In the morning, and I was there in the afternoon. So I don't mean to slight anybody, but those were the ones that I saw or knew of, were among the judges for the senior projects on Friday, last Friday. Every senior at the high school participates in giving a ten-minute presentation, it's a business-like presentation on a topic they choose, to a small panel of judges, of which we participated. And I was impressed, so impressed with the presentations that we saw. They're judged on the way they actually greet the judges, do they make eye contact, are they friendly, their, the knowledge of their topic, the topic that they chose, their business attire, if it's appropriate, or maybe they could use improvement there. And there's, there are also two pieces that say, things they did well, and areas that I don't think it says that they could improve, but, you know, other comments that we might have. It spoke to the future of our youth that will be, at some point, the leaders of our community, and it was very impressive. If you haven't tried it, you should, it was great. Holiday buffet is planned for Thursday, December twenty-second, from eleven to one, for all town departments. I've attached a copy of the invitation, and the departments are really on board, they're really excited to be doing this, I guess they've never had anything, or, not that's department-wide, right? All the departments.
Right, within the town hall.
Yeah, they've done individual departments, but this will be, you know, to get people together, and they seem excited about doing it. As we look toward the new year, we all need to become familiar with the budget process defined in Article Six, I've attached a copy of Article Six, and I would ask that at our January tenth meeting, we possibly go over, I'll try to outline the pieces that need to be, and maybe suggest a timeline for that, so that we're sure we're in sync with what we need to do for that. And I've also started the Capitol Projects, I've invited Tom O'Connor to assist, Ryan Quimby, and Sarah Menard, so we'll be going, talking to all the departments Thursday, Friday, and Tuesday of next week. There's been problems.
Before you leave that subject.
I'm sorry?
Are you suggesting that we start step one of the process as outlined in the charter on that date?
Sure, yeah, I would, if that's a logical spot for us all to begin.
I think it's the, personally, I think it's the logical first step to take.
That's why it's step one.
So if I may, if we can, if we're going to set that on the agenda, we need to get an invitation out to the school committee.
To the school side.
Yeah, that's right.
Would you take care of that time?
That way, everybody's on board for what the process is going to be, and, you know, so. And we'd also need the accountant, because it talks about forecasting and where we are in the budget and stuff. So, there have been problems with trash collection just about every day last week. I received notification that they hadn't completed X, Y, Z streets. The next day, it was a longer list, and, you know, residents were calling. I've tried to call Republic Services and have been getting voicemails only, so they're probably busy scurrying around, I'm not exactly sure what, you know. I did finally get a cell phone number for somebody this afternoon, he said he would get back to me, he didn't know anything about it, and he said he'd get back to me. It's unacceptable, and we'll resolve it, I'm not exactly sure how yet, but we will resolve it. Fire Chief Morsetz reported that the department's nineteen eighty-eight ladder truck has been out of service and in need of major repairs of approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars. With the age of the truck, the concern is that they do those repairs, they start pulling it apart, and there's more that's needed, so it's kind of a catch-22, do we put more money toward that old truck, or do we really address the need of the new ladder truck that I guess has been in Capitol Projects in the past as a proposal? So in the meantime, he's looking for creative solutions to try to get a truck, you know, either repairing that one, or there's somebody that might have one to loan out, he's looking for alternatives to just ordering the truck as quickly as possible, so there will be more to follow on that. I was contacted by a representative from the Springfield Thunderbird Hockey Team. They have designated Saturday, January seventh, as East Long Meadow night. Games start at seven at the Mass Mutual Center. There will be an area set aside, there's two price tickets, seventeen dollars, they're both discounted, I understand, seventeen dollars and fifteen dollars maybe is the discounted rate, and they will set aside an area for everybody that purchases a fifteen-dollar ticket that's from East Long Meadow, and we'll have two sections for East Long Meadow to cheer on the team. They also will give hats that are fifteen dollars, I think he said at the store, for two dollars, and a voucher for hot dog and soda. So, it sounds like a fun time, as soon as I get the flyer, I will pass it out to you all and find out exactly how they want us to advertise it, it'll certainly go on our website, but it probably, you know, we probably can do a press release or something as well to just get the word out there. The town's website is being updated to a more user-friendly look and better access from cell phones and tablets, I guess in the past it hasn't been, hasn't translated real well to your phone. I have a hard time looking at a website on my phone anyway, but I guess this will make it better. So you should see those changes in January, I've seen it, it looks like a cleaner design, a little bit cleaner of a design, I think you'll like it. The planner, assessor, director of Public Works, and director of the Housing Authority, chairman of the Board of Hampton, Board of Selectmen, and I met with a consultant for, that's working on the Community Development Grant. We're looking to partner with Hampton because it'll increase our chances of getting the funding, they're looking at nine hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of grant money. And the projects that are being discussed are sidewalk ADA compliant ramps, shared mobile food pantry, housing rehab loans for qualified property owners. For Hampton, a comprehensive ADA study that we have already in East Long Meadow, and it was done through a grant project. And for East Long Meadow, design work for the elevator that's needed at Town Hall. The consultant has stated that all the projects discussed would be considered solid projects and would be both competitive and fit the application's budget. It is a very competitive, and as, you know, we get more federal and state cuts, less funding, it becomes more competitive to get grant money, but he seemed to think that we had a good chance at it. We're looking forward to Leila Johnson starting at the library, as the library director next Monday, December nineteenth, and we have begun to receive applications for the human resources position. I spoke with our interim building official last week, and he stated he's fine with continuing as our interim, it's kind of a slow season anyway, while we try to figure out what we're going to do to find another solution for what we need. I've been told that all permitting and code enforcement that needs attention is being addressed in a timely manner, I continue to check on that, and we'll keep rolling with that. Have a wonderful holiday season, respectfully submitted Denise Menard.
Denise, on the free cash certification, I mean, that's fantastic, that's actually a considerable amount more than normal.
I don't have that history, so I.
Yeah, and I think, I suspect that that's going to throw us up in the, when you combine that with the stabilization fund, it's going to throw us up into a very high percentage in terms of available funds.
Cash, yeah.
This may be an opportunity for us to put a significant amount of money toward the OPEB obligation and liabilities, so I would just ask, would you mind looking into that, and if appropriate, bring forward a recommendation for?
Absolutely.
And there may be other things that we can get ahead on with it, rather than.
It should be one-time funding if it's coming out of your free cash, you know, not, not day-to-day expenses, so there might be opportunities to.
And that's what I meant by others, other liabilities.
I just wanted to be sure we're on the same page.
Yes, we are, yes, absolutely, thank you.
Emails? Get ahead on the minutes. And motions for the November twenty-second, thirtieth, and December first open session. So, I'll adjutate a motion to approve the November twenty-second, thirtieth, and December first open session minutes. Second, any further discussion?
Just one comment, I suspect you were going to make the same one.
Go ahead.
You're doing a fantastic job on the minutes, and thank you very much. When I don't have any changes.
That's true.
So I agree, the only, and again, this is tiny, the only suggestion, and again, I'm not speaking for everybody, is, instead of perhaps calling us councilman, councilwoman, maybe counselor, is that fine, would you agree with that?
That's good.
It doesn't matter, I mean, it's not, you know, just consistent that way, otherwise, these are outstanding.
Okay, great, thank you.
Problem.
Tom, you're fired.
He's not listening.
He turned it down, he can't hear me.
Here's your severance.
It's been moved in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
Communication correspondence announcements, so Tom, you want to just talk about the seven A?
Yeah, the Department of Agricultural Resources, yeah, I found out I called up their T-Mass, again, this just came, I want to make sure we do things the right way for the first time, we do not need a public hearing, so, what we do need.
I was kind of wondering about that.
Yeah, it's a public announcement, so at the next meeting, I can read the public notice into the minutes, that's all that's required. And what is required, what they want to do is ask the council to reduce the consent from a hundred and twenty days to sixty days because of the M DAR's priority classification of this farmland for protection. And I guess that's a normal thing they do, instead of waiting four months, you know, they ask the council to take a vote to see if you can only wait two months. And again, I have to post the public, you know, notice, which I'll do within the next week. But I don't see any reason to wait the hundred and twenty days, but it's up to the council to vote to.
Well, I'd be interested in what is the purpose of the wait? And then what's the purpose, again, for waiving that and changing it? I guess I don't clearly understand either one of those.
Yeah.
You might not know that now, I'm just saying that before that question is.
Right.
Is posed to us to vote on something like that, those are the questions I'm going to have.
Okay, yeah, here, all it says is the consent, the reduction of no, priority classification of this farmland for protection, so, but I will find that out.
That's it, you're good, Tom?
Yep. And, you know, just last thing to add is that. And, you know, just last thing to add is that it'll be farmland basically forever. That's why, you know, to basically preserving farmland.
So we have an application from the East Long Meadow Firefighters Association for a one-day license for beer and wine, Saturday, January twenty-eighth, 2017, 5:00 PM, and it's actually here. So-
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is any further discussion?
Just a clarification. I'm confused on who's seeking the license.
The Firefighters Association.
Okay, 'cause he has here, with the council's approval, Fazio's Restaurant Pizzeria would like to-
They're catering it?
They're catering the event, so I don't know.
But I guess that's the question. Who does the license get issued to? Yes, that's, I guess, my sense is it goes to Fazio's.
Fazio's is what I've been-
Right, all right. So it's actually Fazio's, not the Firefighters Association?
Right. Since they're, that's my assumption, but we may wanna get, I don't see an issue with it either way. I just meant that we probably wanna make sure I do it right.
So, who would be the one serving? It would be Fazio's.
Yeah, they're serving under their license, yeah.
And it would be under their insurance.
Under their license and insurance.
Insurance as well, yeah. So fire department's not taking out separate insurance like-
No, no.
Other benevolent organizations might for similar-
It's like they did at the, in the center of town for the couple of those functions, where, what was it, the Kicks Country Night, where Fazio's had their license there too.
Right.
So everything ran under their license, so.
So, I guess, we don't have the paperwork from Fazio's, correct? So, since-
Let's move. I don't know if you're familiar with this event, Jim?
I read the agenda.
All right. Who, does Fazio's have to apply for the license? The one-day license?
They, the way I read it is, as Council Madison did, which is that the Fazio's is the one who is being asked to issue the license. They should file the application. They should submit evidence that their insurance, that's for their existing facility, is being extended to cover an event being held-
I see.
-in their location.
Okay.
Because prior to August of this year, they would not be eligible, because you are not allowed to hold two separate licenses under Chapter eighty-eight. That prohibition was removed in August, so they can do that. I guess the only other question is whether or not it's permissible under existing procedures for alcohol to be served in a municipal building.
I couldn't find any prohibition to it.
Yeah, and then last year, we approved the, they had one of those mystery dinner theaters here to raise money for the Council on Aging, and it was catered by Bentley's, and they served with wine, so.
That answers that question.
We've done it before, and it doesn't make it right, but-
I was gonna say, I could continue.
That's why they don't want me getting the big bucks.
Since there is time, and we do meet again before the event, I would suggest-
Yeah, we're meeting a couple times, yeah.
-to draw a motion and-
There's no bias from that.
Not to my knowledge.
Not that I could find, but I can, I'm not real familiar with them. I can look again.
So basically, all Fazio has to do, Fazio's have to do is join the application, so there's no separate application fee and so forth. Right? Because the fire, it is this event, but they're merely, they're catering the event, so I don't-
Well, I don't know about, that's a legal thing, whether they join it or they file-
Well, I just don't wanna have to spend the other $10.
How that, we do that in town manager, but-
Jim?
Through the chair. There was an issue with the restaurant getting a special license to serve, if they're only gonna serve alcohol, if they're gonna be serving food as well. There's a separate catering license that's been enacted by the general board, which restaurants or catering businesses can obtain, independent of anything they file with the town. But if they have a catering license, they're required to submit some basic information to the town. So, I, we don't know, from what I've seen, I don't know whether Fazio's has a catering license. And if it doesn't, it is just asking for a one-day license to serve beer and wine in your facility. That would be permissible. But if they're into a catering, they may fall under the requirements of the state if they have catering license.
Wouldn't it be the Health Department? Because I know she issues food permits for one-day licenses, the Health Department does.
Right, but this, the Alcohol Control Commission, a year or so ago, had legislation enacted which allowed businesses who have a license in a community to provide, of course, provide food and alcohol to events that are not at their licensed premises under this catering license, so they can transport alcohol, transport food. But that was separate and apart from anything approved by the city or the town. So, the question, I guess, is, it's unclear who the applicant is. If it is Fazio's, the question would be, are you a caterer? Or you have a catering license? If so, you should use that license. If you don't, then you could give them a one-day beer and wine license to serve beer. It's just a clarification.
And I think, through the chair, I think in previous years, it was the fire department themselves that actually prepared the food. You know, they just, they're just using the license for the beer and wine. I know they've had these before, and-
So if that's the case, then the beer and wine would be appropriate issue.
And another thing is, obviously, this is the Firefighters Association. I'm just throwing this out there. In the past, we would waive the fees for certain licenses for nonprofits or, you know, so just-
That's why the question is, is it Fazio applying, or is it the fire association?
Well, either way, it's for the same thing. It's for the same thing, so.
So if they join the application, then at least we have that umbrella.
All right, so we'll table that one till the next meeting, 'cause that's not till the twenty-eighth of January. We have applications for machines at the American Legion Post 293, which is actually, what, it's a pinball machine, a video slot machine, and music.
For amusement only, I hope.
Yes. Amusement purposes only, so.
So this one was new to me. I didn't realize that a pinball machine, music machine, needed a license.
I didn't either, until, well, until it came up on the question. I didn't realize it needed it.
Yeah, you need license, yeah. Annual renewal.
So these are, nothing new?
No.
There's no new addition?
So I'm gonna take a motion to approve the applications for machines. Second? Moving seconded. Any further discussion?
I just find it interesting they have to cross the word darts machine and replace the machine. Yeah, we have a forum for darts.
Darts reprinted. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right. That's, old business, we have none. Believe that. New business, we have licensing matters, so everybody got a copy of. Can you get a copy of this, Mike?
I have it right here.
So these are all the, once a year, they have to renew their license, all the businesses have to renew their licenses? So, it's more like a procedural thing, I guess, than anything else, because they're all, and they all expire at the same-
It's an annual renewal.
At the same time, after their annual renewal, so we have, I don't even know how many.
Now, who actually signs the new licenses and gets them out to them?
Kevin signs them, and my office gets them.
I used to hate that.
He signed, you've signed them all already, right?
Yeah, pending approval.
So, if they're approved, we're all set to go.
So they're ready to go out if we approve them all, so.
And if I may-
Fees are collected by my office.
I was saying, if I may, the annual question we ask is, especially with the liquor licenses, is there, haven't been any complaints from anyone as far as these establishments? Because sometimes you wanna get those taken care of while you have the license as a bargaining chip? For lack of a better word?
That's a point.
Or extortion as a bargaining, so, but I don't think we've heard of any problems with any establishments, so.
No, there was some minor stuff, I think, that Danny's addressed as far as the food like establishments, but those are probably, you know, more sold than anything else. I haven't heard anything about any of those.
The liquor licenses have then, have also been signed, inspected, and signed off by the building inspector and the fire chief? Because we can't approve it without those two signatures.
I don't know that. I'll check.
Okay. Is this something they're looking for us to act upon tonight?
I don't think so. I think it's information, well, we don't have another meeting before.
Well, we have it on the twenty-seventh.
I thought we were, it wasn't canceled.
Yeah, I thought we were canceled.
Oh, are we?
We didn't need it anymore.
Oh, the church weren't at the last meeting.
No, it wasn't the last meeting.
Yeah.
That must have been a couple meetings ago. Anyways.
Yeah, this was just informational, just to show, licensing matters, we keep on a consistent basis, because it's always, you know, rolling over and coming up. But this one, you know, just to show that, you know, most of them come due.
Obviously, if Kevin signed them all, then it's nothing that has to be approved by the whole board.
That's correct.
Well, it would have to be approved by the board, because the licenses are approved by the board. He's signed them so that when we get the appro, I would think an approval is necessary by the council, and pending or conditional upon the licensor meeting all of the licensee, meeting all the requirements needed, paying the fees, getting the inspections necessary. And I'll check on the fire and building inspections before they-
I don't remember ever doing the fire and building inspections, before we signed them.
Oh, that was legislation that was passed a number of years ago, and it actually, it came in with the Fire Safety Regulation Acts after the station nightclub fire. And the liquor licenses have to be signed by both the building inspector, that he's inspected the premises, and it's up to code, and the fire inspector that he's inspected, or the fire chief, that he's inspecting, and they're up to code. And that has to be done before they can go to the licensing authority for approval, so.
And that happens on every renewal as well?
Every renewal. We normally, when I was doing it, I did it normally in October. The inspection was conducted in October, sometime in the fall area there before the renewal, so that when it came to my desk, we were prepared to-
You've seen some of our town fees. Are they reflective of an additional service that's necessary?
No, our town fees are real low on everything.
Yeah.
Compared to my past experience.
Are these all due for expiration at the end of this month?
Yes.
What's for fiscal sixteen, the expiration I think?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a little time.
So you would have to inspect every, when you were at Long Meadow, you had to inspect every liquor store, every-
My fire inspector did.
On an annual basis?
Not the liquor stores, the facilities that sold-
Okay.
Head bars, essentially.
I see lighthouse liquors in here and things of that nature, so those, only bars and-
We don't have bars in East Long Meadow.
I'm sorry, taverns. I'm sorry, we don't have them either.
We have restaurants.
Restaurants. We'll need to propose a motion based on-
Yeah, subject to-
Subject to-
Yeah, subject to building inspector and fire department or health department approval.
Fair enough.
I would think that you need all conditions are met, because they have fees that they have to pay. They have to bring in certain documentation, and I've heard the back and forth. Marge is the one that's picked it up while we figure out where this really lands, and, you know, that they're saying, oh, I didn't bring that, whatever piece of paper it was, and they go back, and they come back again. So there are other conditions as well as the inspections. So it might be all conditions are met to-
Yeah, until they get, don't give them the license?
Yeah.
Until everything's been met, so, okay.
So basically, a motion for what, Paul?
To approve, to approve the licenses, the license renewals for the end of the year, or for January first, 2017, with the liquor licenses being subject to the liquor license holders getting, complying with all the regulations, including inspections and fees that relate to the liquor license before they actually will receive the new liquor license.
Craig?
Just don't want to be repeated.
I ask that we apply that to all of them?
Why not?
Sure.
Not just the liquor, but any of them?
Sure.
The issue, it's not issue until they meet all the conditions.
Oh, yeah, okay, all right.
So, do you want me to offer that as an amendment?
Sure, it's your turn.
You're up.
So I'll just offer that as an amendment to Paul's motion. It pertained to all the licenses and not just the liquor license.
Second?
So we have to vote on amendment first, and then the whole motion as amended.
Right. Second? Did you move it second, the amendment?
Amendment, yeah.
Just a, more, just a little clarification, just so that everyone understands, the requirements as to fire inspections are only as applicable. We're not extending that requirement to Friendly's, Coughlin's Place, a place like that.
It's outlined by the state law.
Okay. With that addendum, I'm fine.
So move the second. Discussion on the amendment? You're all set, Tom?
All set.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Now we're gonna vote on the-
Original motion.
Original motion as amended by Council Madison.
So we voted on the amendment, right, so I can't move it, because I proposed it.
It's already proposed.
Oh, all right.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the amended motion? Here, none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. So that's all. Financial matters?
Yeah, this one that was on two A really did not need to be on, because it's something with, no, we have our uptown manager, something that could be handled from that, so that we can just take no action and strike down.
Yep. Three. Current contract status of the town manager.
Yeah, I ask for this to be put on the agenda, 'cause the thought occurred to me that the acting town manager's now our full-time town manager candidate has, her contract expires on the fifteenth, two days from now, and obviously goes without saying, we're not gonna have a new contract in place by the fifteenth. I think it's unfair to ask her, and it's unfair to the town, to ask that the parties operate without a contract. So with that in mind, I would make a motion that we extend the acting town manager's contract for sixty days or until superseded by a new contract as permanent town manager.
Second?
It's just for further discussion, it just gives us a sixty-day period to work on the new contract, and she still has, will have a contract, and all the rights and everything provisions under it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. All right. Now we're gonna move into, make, entertain motion, move into executive session to discuss non-union bargaining issues regarding a town manager.
Well, I move simply-
To return only to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes, to return only to adjourn, thank you.
So I move that we move to executive session for the purpose of discussing non-union bargaining issues regarding a town manager's contract, only to return for the purposes of adjournment.
To move?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Here, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
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 All right. I'm gonna get out of there.